Also, one of our senior officers has seven, eight years of law enforcement experience. And over these months, she was a new supervisor as of April, and she kind of hit the ground running. There, she works our nights. And then over the summer, you know, we've had several critical incidents here in the city, and a lot of times she was the tip of the spear that handled and coordinated those incidents in response to it. So congratulations, ma'am.
At this time, something new we're gonna do every month, Chief Mitchell is gonna give us a report on what's kind of happened with the police department. I was asking you to kind of throw that in here at this meeting tonight.
Thanks, sir. I'll make this brief. I got some handouts there. We call our crime report, CBD crime report for November 2017, and all this activity was from October of this past month. So just going over the form, you see our calls for service. We were pretty close to 2,000 calls for service for the month itself. 127 arrests, 25 cases assigned to CID, and citations 363, and warnings, which total 404 traffic stop contacts that are officers each month. If you see Section 1 there, areas concerning coinciding strategic planning, each month we have what's called CompStat meeting, where we come together and look at the data from all these 1,955 calls for service, put that data together, and as supervisors, we look at it, where are the hotspots in the city for criminal activity? Where are the patterns that we are seeing? What, where's the correlation between crimes that have been committed? And we come up with a strategic plan to combat that. So this month, you'll see there, our top two were shoplifting and entering auto. And you see the locations, the trends and patterns, when the cases occurred, the locations, which you see at Walmart and Kohl's. And then our strategy was extra zone patrol, increase our visibility as far as officers getting out on foot and foot patrolling the areas, and also using a car to put in these locations as a decoy, if you will. People come up, if they come to you in the middle, so they'll think that an officer is there at that time. But please don't tell anybody. But entering autos was our second. We had 13 cases, locations that you see there, and we increased our visibility and our traffic enforcement in those areas, and use our tag readers in those areas as well. The 13 cases, all the cases, the vehicles were open. There was no forced entries on the vehicle, where citizens leave their vehicles open with their articles in the vehicles. And we routinely put out information to citizens to, don't leave your wallet, your credit cards, your laptop, your weapons in your car, and unlock, even if it's locked overnight. So a lot of those crimes are an opportunity where someone parks and walks in with, let's say, a backpack and starts just popping doors and things. But we put that information out to the community as well, a lot of times in these areas. Accidents, you'll see that most accidents occurred on Friday. We pinpoint what those times are, and then the most common of the roadways of occurrence, which you see there is North Canton intersection, Riverstone Parkway coming highway. You see the contributing factors. A lot of those are the following too closely. We have some distracted driving there. As a strategy, what we hold each month is a selective traffic enforcement operation, where we go to these areas and look for the contributing factors of these accidents, the following too closely, the distracted driving. And if you look on page two, where all of our strategies go, we've also put our sign trailer, our sign out, as far as the causes of the accidents. But as a result of our selective traffic enforcement operation, we issued 25 citations. The good majority of those were for distracted driving. And then you see the three warnings. Any questions on those, that activity there? Our second is the upcoming community events. We had our Call With a Cop in October, and as you see, our Police in the Park was postponed, and it will be December the 9th. We have an upcoming meeting in Alexander Ridge, another community meeting on the 6th. As you see, the Veterans Day Parade we handle each year, Optimist's Club presentation for our Shop With a Cop program, a police recruitment program for new hires on the 16th here, 16th of November here at City Hall. And then we have our Read With a Cop program on the 17th. Also on the 17th, we have our School Mentorship Program, where officers can go speak to some students that are having a hard time at school or a hard time at home, and use them to mentor, to mentor those children, in an effort to get them back on that right path. Not in there is also, we're gonna have another Call With a Cop program coming up on, we're shooting for the 22nd at Starbucks on Riverstone. Some updates on some cases, the robbery at the dealership on Liberty Drive, the dollar's dealership. You see that all the vehicles have been recovered, and we have executed multiple search warrants and identified possible persons of interest. There was a shots fired call on Alexander Ridge. Those suspects have been identified, and warrants have been issued as well, and we're currently looking for them at this time. Here recently, and we'll have more information coming out, we've had a couple of incidents of purses being, I guess you could say snatched. The county's also had those incidents. We've got some really, really good leads in that case, and we're working that going forward. So I hope we'll have some closure on that by next week as well. So the only other couple things that I'm not trying to throw a lot of time is just one of the other strategies that the city manager and I were talking about as far as any criminal activity. Here lately, a lot of our criminal activity, we've identified suspects that have been coming in from out of our jurisdiction, out of our city, committing the crimes, which we've been very blessed to have been able to have effective arrest on multiple, many of those. But I know that, I don't know, we've put up two cameras already in the city, and I know we're working to put additional cameras up in the city as we go forward. I approached the city manager, and I may approach, maybe using impact fees, with putting on several of those cameras, they're called license plate readers for pole. They go with the camera on the pole. So being activity, any criminal activity or anything serious happens, we get a vehicle description. All we gotta do is look back for our, it's called the LPR, and we'll be able to pull exactly, the car, get a picture of the car, the tag description of the car, and who the car comes back to. I think that's just another step to enhance the safety and security for our citizens, and also helps us to be able to solve additional criminal activity. And when we're able to do that, if we're able to do that, if it's proved, I think it's another good message to send those that want to come into our city to commit crimes that we will catch you and put you in jail. So any questions?
I have three. The first, entering autos, River Green Avenue is over two miles long. My assumption is that these cars that are being entered are near the entrance, where the apartments are. A lot of people park their cars on the street?
Yes, sir.
So what you're saying is though they park them on the street, and they leave valuables in the car, and they don't lock the doors?
Yes, sir.
So the low hanging fruit is just sitting there near the entrance, and they come in and pick us off?
Yes, sir. That's a lot of times.
I need people to smarten up.
Well, again, we try to educate during our community meetings, and through our social media, hold people to lock their belongings and their valuables in their homes overnight, even if their car is secured. So like I said, probably 98, 99% of our cars that's entered during the year are unlocked, and they're not forced, there's no forced entry. Because again, it's a quick crime opportunity, people just pop doors. I'd rather someone secure their vehicle at night, and their car alarm go off, and let your insurance company pick up that broken glass, but also alert the citizens if a alarm goes off, or they hear that broken glass, or a dog bark, for someone to see something, to give us a good vehicle description, so we can, or a tag number.
And the purse situations, those purses were not on people. Purses were left in a shopping cart, if the person is somewhere else in the store, or left in a shopping cart, a person's putting things in their vehicle. It's just out there. So some of it is just that mentality we've got to get in our citizens to, you know, be a little bit more proactive.
Well, I know they, Walmart for instance, they have cameras, because they track them from the outside. They found them in the garbage dump, in a dumpster down at Woodstock, what they took out of my car. But that was years ago. I had another question. This high profile, the vehicles that were stolen, that is the most brazen thing I've ever heard of, when they come in there with guns, ask for the keys, block out. When you look at those parking lots, there's millions and millions of dollars worth of vehicles sitting there. Is this, is this a national trend, or is there anything going on there? That's scary.
Well, a week prior to this one, there was an incident in Carnesville, where several, three or four vehicles. And then, I don't know if there's any link, 21 that occurred in Winnie County yesterday, where it was $400,000 worth of vehicles taken by a large group. I don't know. It's something that we'll look into. I have no idea if there's a connection there. But it is happening around the country, and probably around the state. So again, that's something that our ex controls, our working there. Some things that we talked about, commercial lighting, things such as that, Liberty, but just some other things, like cameras, one of those, I think that intersection there, Riverstone, and maybe Gold Bar is one of the high profile cameras, the cameras that were the areas that we wanted to put, put a camera in the future. So.
The other thing, I saw there was a report about the tagging of that vehicle that was caught, because you tagged the car. I don't understand the technology. When I rode years ago, in my four hour ride, when he walked up to the car, we were in the car, and there was a camera on, but he went up and fingerprinted the car with his hand. I'm trying to remember why he did that. It wasn't tagging, certainly.
Did I, officer?
Yes.
And I go up to him, and approach the traffics out, just making sure that trunk's secured, and there's no one in there?
No, no, no. It was something to do with, if I get shot or something, my fingerprints are on it, on that car. But this tagging thing, if the cat's not out of the bag, it is out of the bag. You reported, it was reported, this tagging thing. This is a technology that sounds phenomenal.
It's brilliant, yes, sir.
You have it on all of our vehicles?
No, sir. No. We purchased last year two of those devices with impact fees, and we're looking at potentially doing that sometime in the future. But that's just another area that I've talked with the city manager and our staff, as far as...
How much do they cost each?
Five thousand.
Per car?
Five thousand.
So it's kind of tough when you only got two of them, right? How many people you got on patrol? And we got take on cars, so some vehicles only probably being used eight hours a day, or 12 hours a day, whatever it is.
It's 12 hours a day, and really, just those are the devices that, and again, we'll have one tonight, but knock on wood, we don't have that many chases that often, but there's those times that you need that, where you've all seen on the news, the horrific crashes as a result of a chase. And that's something, we have policies in place where we can only chase for certain criteria. But this device right here, to us, will only enhance the safety for the community and the officer, because again, like I've said in the media this week, inherent dangers associated with those high speed drivings and people fleeing from you. But it's just, it's a, it's a very good piece of technol, excellent piece of technology, where the officer can do it from his car, or if he's on a traffic stop, and he suspects the individual's gonna run, or he can, he's got an excellent button on his belt that he can push, he can go ahead and tag the car before the vehicle takes off.
What's the distance that he has to be to pursue it? Or is it electronic, is it satellite?
I want to say, you know, don't quote me on that. I think it's right around 20 feet, if I'm not...
No, he has to make the tag, but how far, how long can you tag it? How long can you...
Oh, he can track them. I would think, I would say it's got a nine minute, nine minute charge on that, so that's more than enough time. So.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Ms. McGree, any public service announcements?
A few, thank you. I'll be reading them from my phone, so it's gonna be a little harder. Cherokee County Historical Museum mapping Cherokee. It's a new temporary exhibit that's opening at the Cherokee History Museum and the Visitor Center. Canton Theater, November 3 through 12, over the river and through the woods. It's a comedy presented by the Cherokee Theater Company. Cherokee County Arts Center, holiday members show and sale, November 7 through December 16, in the gallery. And the Cherokee Photography Show is a stairwell showcase. Saturday, November 4, is Dumpster Day at Canton City Hall from 8:00 a.m. until noon. You can dispose of trash, unwanted items, and up to 10 tires per resident, and recycle mini electronics free of charge. November 4 is Holiday Slam Car Show at Etowah River Park, 9 to 5. November 11, Canton Inferno Chili Cookoff from noon until 3. The Owl Creep Band will entertain in the gazebo, and interested participants should call Pat Gold at City Hall. November 11 is the Veterans Day Parade in downtown Canton at 1:30, presented by the Thomas M. Brady Post 45 of the American Legion. November 11, Military History Preservation Display in Heritage Park, 8:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. And November 7 is Election Day. Don't forget to vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. Considering the agenda, I would like to add an executive session to discuss potential litigation and personnel. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? If not, I would have a motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended.
Mr. Grant seconded the motion. All in favor, signify, saying aye. All in opposed, no. All members voted in motion. You have in your agenda package as well, the minutes from the October 19 meeting. Are there any changes? Motion. All in favor, signify, saying aye. All in opposed, no. All members voted in motion. Also in your agenda package, you have the financials for September. Are there any questions regarding those? CFOs here, answer any questions, if you have any. Since this is for informational purposes, I don't need to vote approval. 10-minute public input period. Mr. Weaver?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver, and I reside at 131 Old Mary Road here in Canton. This evening, I'm pleased to be able to share with you, as I did with the city clerk last week, that finally, after six months of working with Leah Hump with the Office of Communications Division of the Cherokee County School District, and specifically the Supervisor of Communications, Strategic Planning and Partnerships, Ms. Carrie McGowan, that the school district has finalized the detransfer of the auxiliary parking lot located at the corner of the Illinois-Captain Streets. Now, I don't want to venture so far in tangent, so as to steal Mr. Pepper's thunder, but I'm pleased to learn that this has been agendized for agenda consideration on this November cycle. I do hope that you give at least initial favorable consideration to the matter, which ironically falls exactly three years to the date, that the first school safety sound maps were approved by the city three years ago, which also is on record with the archives there. So for me, this is very important, a little accomplishment of my own. But again, I do have a vested interest in this based on my past work with both the school district and the city, which have a meaningful partnership now. And I do ask that this receive an initial favorable approval in advance to a second reading. As long as that concludes, thank you.
Thank you. Angela Treffley, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you did. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Angela Treffley. I am proud to live and work and raise my family here in Canton. I'm here tonight with my daughter, who is a fifth grader over at Canton Elementary. I've always been a Georgia native, but I left here a few years ago and moved back here. We chose Canton in 2013. We ultimately purchased a house in this area, not on a farm location, but because of the schools that were zoned in that particular area. I'm here tonight because I am one of many parents that has children who are greatly going to be affected if the city does not take steps to address the school issue within this city, specifically with Canton Elementary and Cherokee High School. And I believe that this city and this council should get involved in the county's efforts to address the overcrowding at Cherokee High School and the current plan to eliminate Canton Elementary. You may be thinking, why is she asking us to get involved, as it's merely a county concern? But there's more to it than that. Any decision regarding the schools that are here in the city directly affects this community and thousands of its residents, more importantly, our children. This is another opportunity for this board and the city to show your investment in their residents and future development. Essentially, you all are very aware of the current situation with Cherokee High School and the overcrowding. The school district, after many years of growth and issues with the school itself, the district has decided that they need to address this matter ASAP, and are trying to do it at a record speed and merely a band-aid approach at best. There is no long-term arrangement without complaining for our future or for our children. And you all are probably aware, the school district has present, presented to the public for consideration for options for the Cherokee High School and Canton Elementary's own families, which they believe address the issue of crowding at the high school. As you are aware, this is not an issue that is new to our school district, and it's been ongoing for several years. The district is attempting to take over our school, Canton Elementary Building, and incorporate it into part of Cherokee High School, and eliminating Canton Elementary. And that includes disforcing children into two different elementary schools, one of which would be in Waleska. Now, this option is unacceptable to me as a parent and a member of this community. The educational opportunities that my children have been given and continue to receive at Canton Elementary simply cannot be replicated. The other options include moving Canton to ACE and shifting students around that way. But those also come with a fair share of costs and negatives associated with them. I'm asking this council and the city to get involved in addressing a long-term plan to address both Cherokee High School and Canton Elementary. All of this county's ideas right now effectively eliminate an entire school and community. And Canton has worked to become a top-notch school in this area, including receiving the new work for Georgia Elementary Student Academy of the Year. A community that has been built by hard work of our residents, and the dedication of teachers, staff, and family members in this community. It's not just the school or building, it's our family. I'm asking this board to please get involved with the county and help go to the county to assist with the ideas of building a new high school or an alternative, a new elementary school. And this is so desperately what's wanted and needed by our community. As a city, assisting with the planning and development of a new high school or elementary school would greatly benefit our city and its residents, and would help provide our children with an environment to thrive in their education with room for growth and development. And it would also help improve with the development attractiveness of our great city, and would help with Canton forward. Investing in our schools by the city with the county would be a positive thing to address new businesses, new residents, and even planned development for houses. Currently, there are no plans to build a new high school or even renovate Cherokee High School. Economically, continually, continuing to pour money into a school that has no room for expansion and deteriorating infrastructure just doesn't make sense. I believe this city and the members of this council have the ability to work with the school district, school district board members, and community to provide our students with what is needed. And there would be numerous benefits for this council to help not only preserve Canton Elementary and keep it where it is, but also work towards a new high school, and hopefully using that land where Cherokee is now to benefit the city of Canton in the future, under the guise of keeping Canton moving forward. Thank you for your time and inspiration.
Thank you. Jonathan Kessler?
Good evening, Jonathan Kessler, though.
I'm sorry. We used to have a Kesslers here in town, but they had two S's in it. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. I wish I had come from that lineage of family.
I understand. I understand.
We must have been the black sheep. I want to thank you first for allowing me to come speak and provide a little bit of input as well. I'm here with Ms. Treffley to encourage the mayor and this council to consider what you as a body can do to potentially affect a new high school for Cherokee High School within the city of Canton. I have lived here since 2000 in the city of Canton. I moved into the Great Sky subdivision in 2011 with an eye towards the new Teasley Middle School that I knew was coming for my kids to attend, and knowing that they would attend Canton Elementary School, which we had heard so many positive things about in terms of what they were doing there with the education. As Ms. Treffley indicated, Canton Elementary was awarded the 2016 Jordan School of the Year for an Elementary School, and I think that shows the amount of work that staff and administrators at Canton Elementary are doing. Just today, we received an email from the county school district that indicated that the CCRPI, which is a college readiness test that is given to elementary, middle, and high school students in the county, I guess statewide, that CCRPI score at Canton Elementary went from a 60 in 2015 to a 71.5 in 2017, which is an absolutely tremendous assertion to the work that's being done at that school. As Ms. Treffley indicated, the proposals that have been put forward by the school board essentially all eliminate Canton Elementary as a school. There are plans, they say, to build a new elementary school in seven to eight years, but that would be after the students that are currently there would be dispersed to other schools in the area. I did not buy a home in the city of Waleska, not because I have anything against the city of Waleska, but I wanted to live in the city of Canton, work here. I have a law office in town. My wife works here. She's a pharmacist at the hospital. We have seen the anticipated growth that this city has started over the last several years, and we want to be a part of that as it moves forward. We think that the city of Canton should have a school, both an elementary school and a high school, that can be a beacon to other families and people that want to move to the city. And I think that there are some options that could be available if people that are much smarter than me in planning these things can get in a room together and talk about this. I know in talking to several board members, or several council members, rather, several city employees, that there are some possibilities that have been discussed and floated. And I think that I would encourage this board and this council to continue those discussions with the school board. I think a new high school to replace Cherokee, which was built in 1956, and frankly, hasn't seen much in the manner of improvement to it since, would be an absolute beacon to draw people to this community. I know the neighborhood in which we live in, I think, has about 400 empty lots in it, ready to be built upon. I have talked to representatives of the new developer that recently purchased the neighborhood. I can assure you that they do not want to tell future homeowners in their subdivision that they're going to send their young kids five miles north to another city to go to school. And I think that that developer could be someone that the city could talk to, along with the school board, to try to get some action towards moving to a new high school. And with that, if I may yield about one minute of my time to my daughter, who is here. Her name's Avery Kessler. I think she's getting up to this, although I wanted to say thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Avery Kessler, and I'm currently a fifth grade student at Canton Elementary School. I have enjoyed my experience at Canton and have made many wonderful friends at school. I feel that I've been prepared to attend Teasley Middle School next year, and ultimately Cherokee High School. I am concerned about the current state of the high school where I will attend in just four years. I want to feel comfortable in a high school that will allow me to continue to grow as a student and a young adult who is looking forward to college. I want to urge the mayor and his council to explore all options that will continue the efforts this city has made to move Canton forward in the years to come. A shiny new high school will certainly draw families to live, work, and plan our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's all we have on public input period. Our old business, Mr. Pepper's update on the Jones Building Project?
Absolutely. I had an opportunity earlier this week to go on a tour of that facility with Mr. Crosby from the building department. We are currently working on our schedule for meetings every two weeks on site with both the architect and the construction firm that's working out there. Just to give you a little bit of idea where they're at on the demolition on the interior building, basically everything that's non-original load-bearing on the main floor has already been cleared out. They are working on the demolition of all the non-load-bearing things on the upper floor at this time. Our hope is to have the not-to-exceed guaranteed maximum price next week. They are supposed to have all of their bids in this week. They are supposed to have all of their bids in this week. And so if that is the case, we will put that on the agenda for the next meeting for you to consider. We also, in that time period, will need to schedule some time. I'd like for you to be able to get into the building so you can kind of see it. There's some conversations that we need to have specifically about what we think uses might be. And I think it'll be a lot easier for you to visualize when you're in there. I am, I'm very happy so far with the work that's been done. We found original hardwood floors in most of the building. We found windows. We found a freight door that was still intact. So there's lots of great things in there and it's, it's amazing to see that building opened up as it was. So we'll probably be sending out an email tomorrow to see if we can schedule a time for everybody to get in over there with your hard hat on and see the building in progress so far.
Great. Looking forward to that. I know everyone else is as well. New business discussion, possible action on street closing for the Outcomes Club Christmas parade and concert.
I will handle that. Ms. Gold is not, is out with us recovering from a little bit of medical procedure, but we have, as you know, we require our events to close roads to come before the mayor and council, and this is our Christmas parade, which would be held on December the second. The setup time would be noon, I'm sorry, ten AM to eight PM. The parade and the concert would fall between twelve noon and seven PM.
I guess you probably do need action on that, December the second, or?
Yeah, I, I think it's fine as long as there's no hesitation here. If y'all want to wait till the next meeting to approve it, I don't see that as an issue.
I think you gotta be all right. We can do that. And I don't think this will be a problem.
What we have been doing lately with these events is requiring basically a public notice in the newspaper that we're closing the streets and the times and all that. So we'll go ahead and get that prepared so that they can get that placed.
I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed that on the page of the summary of insurance that someone has written expired. Has that been rectified? Do they have insurance now?
Yes, yes.
Will they do that in writing?
They will, they will provide that to us. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Discussion of the request for downtown Canton School Safety Zone map. Any questions on that? Does everyone understand what, exactly what that is? Okay. And that's part of the area that we have acquired there, I guess, from the Board of Education and the new development is going out that way as well. All right, so we'll cast our vote on that on the sixteenth. Discussion of electric vehicle charging station?
I had had a couple of emails from council members asking for information about electric vehicles, so there may be some discussion from them at that point. We've had discussions in the past with George Power. They have a, they have a rebate program. We, Mr. Ingram and I have met with companies that install electric charging stations in the past. We have not moved forward with that to date, just because parking is a little tight downtown and it makes it a little difficult if you carve out specific spots that are only electric vehicle parking. But one of the things that we've discussed is that moving forward, if the city's going to build a parking facility, a parking deck, that that's easily something that can be a component of that. We've also looked into electric vehicles at the city side. You know, right now, one of the bigger issues is the types of vehicles that are out there compared to what our uses are from a city standpoint. You know, the building department needs a truck. There aren't really good options out there right now, electric vehicles on the truck side. But, but we keep that as a, as a reminder in our back pocket when we do things to try to look into getting as, as much of an environmentally friendly vehicle as we can. But I mean, I'd be open for any discussion on council, what you'd like to do with electric charging stations.
Comments, questions? Go ahead.
Yes, I was, you know, we've been talking about this and I believe Michael Butler with Audio Landos Section had come forward and said he was willing to put a charging station outside on North Street. He was running the power, he was willing to pay for the power. I told him it couldn't certainly be for just his business, but he's, he's willing to do that. We would, you know, give him option to do that across the sidewalk and repair that. But, you know, I think it's, I think it's a great thing to offer and I've been doing some research on it and, you know, electric vehicles are, sales are rising by thirty-three percent every year and a lot of cities are, are, you know, providing them. And, you know, in addition to just, you know, being a convenience for electric vehicle owners, you know, the studies show that they improve property values. It encourages bringing businesses to relocate and invest in the local economy, taxing to long-term revenue stream if you charge for that. And then helps reduce, you know, overall measurable, you know, carbon emissions. I took the liberty of doing a little bit of research and I just got these reports right before I came here, so I'll, I'll happy to forward, email them, but contacted Woodstock, Bryan Stockton in Woodstock, just to see, you know, how their charging stations has gone. And they, they installed theirs in, in two thousand and fifteen, October two thousand and fifteen, and they've measured, they do monthly reports of how many sessions per month and sessions is any time anyone plugs in to charge. And, you know, they've had months that almost two hundred sessions were used and the lowest a month has been five hundred sessions, so five hundred people charged in, you know, plugged in to, to charge. But the accumulated, you know, charges and sessions are certainly rising, have gone from zero, of course, to almost twenty-five hundred since they've installed them. They actually charge and they know it's not a revenue stream. You know, I think it's actually, you know, a great public service. I know there's a very visible, and I think it does, it is a sign that we're, you know, showing that we are, you know, on cutting edge and we're, we're being, you know, sustainable as much as we can. And I do think, you know, it attracts in business, I know Audio Intersections thinking about, you know, their two fleet vehicles being electric. So I think it's, you know, it's a good thing for the city and, and I'm, I'm fine with it if we consider it's part of the parking deck. I just wonder if it maybe could be, should be more visible to the public. The research I did also showed that however, if people want electric vehicles, if there are charging stations in town, they will seek them out and, you know, it doesn't have to be visible, but someone coming in from town, you know, shopping or something, an electric vehicle may not know that it's in a parking deck. I suggest you possibly could be taught to the Harris Group on the school board property and the hundred twenty-five dedicated spaces and could one of those, you know, at the back of those be, you know, the most walkable distance because also owners of electric cars tend to be ones that don't mind walking a little further. But I'm fine to just, just consider it. The other thing in Woodstock, and they've also measured their charging stations and the greenhouse gas reduction. And since they started and it, you know, it climbs, it depends on the month of sessions, but they eliminated over, over six thousand kilograms of greenhouse gases in that. So I think that's a good thing, but I think it's a good, a good thing. I think it's only going to grow in demand and, and say, I think it could be part of a parking deck. But knowing the timeframe for that is, should we be moving a little bit more quicker and, and if we have a business that's willing for public private partnership, you know, does that make sense? That could benefit, you know, everyone in the city. So I just want to kind of get it out there, you know, but I can forward these reports. I think, you know, that, you know, Woodstock did say, you know, they had, you know, people complained that that's a prime parking spot, you know, because it's right there on the corner. But, you know, to...